Good evening, everyone. We're happy to have all of you here in City Council. And we hope that all of you had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank, want to thank the viewing audience for tuning in with us tonight. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for taking us through Thanksgiving. Certainly, we have a lot to be thankful for. Continue to bless our city and all the citizens there that are in the city of Orangeburg. And bless this council in a special way. In your name we pray. Amen. I want to ask all the council members, if you would, if you're going to make comments, please raise your hand to be recognized so we can get your comment on record over there, please. Item number one is a consideration of November the 18th through 2025 City Council Minutes.
Mayor and council, I motion the absence of the election, I mean for the council consideration of council minutes for December 18th, November 18th, 2025.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kidd.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
As have, the motion is carried. Okay, the recognition of December community of character trait. The trait is self-discipline. And it is the ability to control one's feelings and overcomes one's weakness. And we're asking everyone to please demonstrate this character. The character trait for this month is self-discipline. Okay. Item number two. Our city administrator's going to talk to us about item number two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So, item number, excuse me, item number two for your consideration is second reading of an ordinance amending, restating, striking, and replacing chapter 12 of the city code Animal Control. As you all might recall from the last meeting on the 18th, this ordinance would basically revamp the current city code on animal control. It's quite extensive. Happy to point out some highlights, just as a reminder. Let me do that. If I can follow my notes here.
Excuse me, do everyone have this sheet here from Chief on animal control?
Yes, sir.
That's what he emailed. I don't have it.
No. Okay, all right, go ahead, Ms. Evans.
Okay. Again, just very, very brief highlights. The ordinance would require the general care and welfare provision that all owners provide food, water, shelter, veterinary care for animals. Any agricultural animals such as cows, horses, mules, goats, animals of the like would require special permission from DPS to be within the city limits. It would allow chicken, up to four chickens on residential properties, but no roosters. Requires tethering and abandonment. And abandonment of animals prohibits unsafe tethering and short leases or chains that choke the collars on animals. Bans certain exotic animals. And then Ms. Greaves, Councilwoman Greaves has had a question about whether or not there was a grandfather clause. And of course, there are no grandfather clauses currently, but if that's council's desire, you could certainly put any grandfather in language in the ordinance. And happy to answer any questions. I mean, we did receive, was copied on an email from the United States Association of Reptile Keepers who had some, I guess, some concerns about portions of the ordinance. And happy to share those with you, but I think-
Concerns were, as relates about lizards and alligators and all of that?
Exotic animals. Their primary concerns were, you know, they quoted a ban on a completely harmless species. No provisions for current owners to keep animals, the grandfather provisions. They said that there were vague definitions that are open to interpretation. Ban on constrictor snakes. And just, they thought that the ordinance was overreaching. So I'm not familiar with this association. Looks like they've been around since about 2008 or what have you, based on the Wikipedia page, but I'm not sure that source. And I know they put an alert out on their website asking for local residents to reach out to you all. So, I don't know if you got some emails or not, or what have you, but they put out an alert on their website, but-
Okay, Mr.-
Hannah.
Hannah, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a good day. A good issue that Orangeburg is bringing to the citizen for the citizen. But I would ask the question, how do we stack up, or how do we rank for other municipalities similar size with their ordinance? How do we look?
Yeah, and I'll defer a little bit to our attorney, because I know he's done some research, for example, the county, in terms of the definitions of exotic animals. Can you kind of give council a highlight on your findings, please?
Sure, so we're relatively similar to the way that, I think one of the objections was that there wasn't included, can you hear me? All right. There was, one of the objections was that it wasn't an exhaustive list. It was an included but not limited to approach. And that's generally what we're seeing with other municipalities in the state, Charleston, Columbia. With regard to the county, their definition is the same. Theirs is exotic creatures is a category that includes but is not limited to the following: lions, tigers, cougars, various other large cats, bears, wolves, coyotes, jackals, crocodiles, alligators, and similar carnivores, monitors, those types of snakes that forfeit the foregoing definition of exotic creature, and those creatures which, when in captivity in the United States, have traditionally been confined in zoos. So some of the objections that we received, or the comments that came in objected to that language, that's already what the county has for the county. And my understanding is that they've had that in place since 2009. So, we're not really paving new ground as it relates to a wide, relatively wide definition of exotic creatures. Ours is not exactly word for word, but the county is, we include some additional descriptions as to constrictor snakes, for example, but it largely tracks with the county.
Thank you. Most people don't have exotic animals. I'm speaking about basically cats and dogs. How do we rank up the ordinance as late to the other towns with cats and dogs?
I mean, I think, Councilman, largely, the city's proposal is consistent that dogs have to be tagged and identified. You've got to meet basic necessities. Again, that's in the county code presently. The provision that they're not allowed to run at large, and if they are running at large, they can be seized by animal control, you know, that's largely consistent with the way other municipalities operate. Any specific questions?
No, I'm saying, what I'm doing is, we're not to any screen. And when you relate to other cities, we basically just go along with the norm.
Yes, and I think with regard to dogs particularly, it's also consistent with prior code. So, most of the amendments to the chapter, if you look back at the old chapter 12, it addressed dogs and cats, and has since it was in place in the 60s. So it's tweaked and updated, but I think most of the comments we received were more directed to the additions, which were not specific as to dogs and cats. And the parts that are enhanced and updated as to dogs and cats more pertain to addressing the owner and how to try to identify the owner and, you know, frankly, communication with the owner if an animal is seized running at large.
Thank you, sir.
What process would one follow if they wanted to seek special permission for an exception with one of these items that's listed in the ordinance? What would be the parameters or guidelines that would need to be met in order for them to be granted special permission? Or is this just a process that we're asking them to follow?
So you apply, you get approved? For the chief in terms of enforcement, but I mean, there's not a specific provision in here to say, if you do X, Y, and Z, you can keep there. I mean, there's not a, there's not a process laid out for that sort of animal in terms of a permitting process to, you know, be Mike Tyson and keep a tiger in your backyard. I mean, that's not presently part of the ordinance. If that's something council would like us to include, we can certainly amend it. And again, I would defer to the chief who'd be in charge of enforcing it as to what that might look like. Are there any specific-
No, I'm just wondering, so if I do, you know, I have a tiger, and, which I don't, by the way, but if I do have a tiger, then am I just applying to get special permission to keep my tiger in my backyard? And again, I do not have a tiger, so be sure that's in the minutes, please. Don't have chickens, don't have tigers. But if I did, then what would happen? Am I just applying in-
I like the Clemson, Carolina analogy.
Didn't even realize you did that.
I'm still going to defer to the chief as to what you do if you told him you had a tiger.
Chief, you want to, you want to come up here and talk about this?
I think he's a Gamecock, so I'm interested.
We're just getting answers, in case.
I neither have a tiger, nor a chicken, nor a bulldog. But we would actually need guidelines from you incorporated into the ordinance. I would not want to undertake something like this arbitrarily.
Now, I want to, I want to make a suggestion. Now, we have to, I feel, I'm just going to say, I feel, that we need to make rules to protect our public. Because if those animals get out, you can't domesticate them. They are wild. They belong to the wild. And if they get out and they harm someone, you know, that's going to be a problem. You know, I'm an animal lover. I love animals, and I like to do, but I also know that I am an ordinance, uh- But I want to say, give me the word, when we say, we make rules. And we make rules not for us, we make rules for the general public. And to protect them at all times. And I just, you know, I just think we need to be careful with these exotic animals. You know, you have to make a, you know, rule, do we have the protection? You know, in case with the police department, anybody trained, if they get out and they hurt somebody, get out, walk through your neighborhood, down your street, and grab your daughter, your son, some old person, you know, do we have the protection? That's what we have to look at from our, as a body, as we make the rules. Because our job is to make sure that Orangeburg is safe, Orangeburg is economically sound, Orangeburg, you know, there's so many things that we have to make rules to make sure Orangeburg is in this vein. And I just think that the fact that you cannot domesticate those animals, they need to be somewhere so someone can keep them, they have to be fed, they have to have medicine and all of that, so you just got to have them somewhere so that they can do that. That's my, that's my spiel on that. I don't know about nobody else.
I'm all for the domesticated animals, you know, dogs, cats, keeping them safe. I think the definition of exotic animals in this ordinance is extremely broad. I think it could end up restricting people from owning animals that aren't really a problem. If we're going to regulate something like this, we need to be clear about what we mean and not leave it up in interpretation, whereas one person sent me an email, he had a picture of some little lizards, and they said they were full grown, you know, six to eight inches long. I don't think that's something that's going to get out and hurt somebody. And that's stuff we can buy right here in Orangeburg County at the local pet stores. I don't think it's appropriate to ban somebody's right to have those. And then, like Chief Austin, you know, I think we're going to have to get training on identification. Do you have anybody in the department that's familiar with reptiles? I mean, so if this ordinance does pass, and you get a tip or a call, or in a house for a domestic or whatever, and they see these animals, we need somebody who's capable of identifying these animals and identifying them properly before we start taking animals out of people's homes.
We would need to expand the training that's available for our current animal control officers, you know, in order for us to do that.
Yeah, I think this is, I'm good with everything else, but I just think the exotic animals part needs to be excluded for now, until we can get some training and we can get some definitions. Clearly, I mean, animals kept in zoo, they keep birds in zoo, so I mean, technically, they'd be against the ordinance if you put this in there. I just don't think it's fair to somebody who has one of these animals and not knowing if they're going to be grandfathered in, or if they go to DPS and try to get a permit, what's the restrictions within the permit? Are we just going to say no on everybody? Is there, I mean, there's got to be some type of protocol in place that we can follow and make sure this is done the right way.
Yeah, I agree. I feel like the ordinance, I would like to have some more time to maybe spend with this and flesh out some of these details before it passes. I think there's some broad language in there, and I do want to protect the citizens absolutely, but I think we need to be more specific in terms of the language and the wording that is in here.
Well, let's, if it pleases the council, let's see, can we put this on hold till we can get the specified language in the exotic portion, you know, till we can see, you know, we have to look at, I feel the animals that, that's not going to harm people, that's different, but the ones that harm people, I mean, we have to make a difference there. But then we need to get, we don't have, we need to specify a little bit more.
Right, and we need to be clear on what that means, because I may say, my dog isn't going to harm anyone, but it may have a bad day.
He got teeth, he can have a bad day.
Yeah.
I do have a dog, by the way.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm in favor of pushing this bill, ordinance, forward. Until then, when we bring it back, we need to really define, because we live in an environment where we have exotic animals. We need to really define a controlled environment. What do we mean by controlled environment? What is the liability of someone who has exotic animals, and that animal, or reptile, whatever it may be, hurts someone else? So there's a lot of ambiguities within this ordinance that we need to redefine, to make it more specific that DPS will be able to execute their work or their duties properly. So, I'm in favor of tabling this for a while and rehearsing the information that is given tonight.
A second, do we need a second for that?
That was a motion.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay. Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu and second by Councilman Greaves.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Table it, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is passed.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, did we move to table it to the next meeting, or just to postpone it indefinitely?
To the next meeting.
But I'm going to ask the council, what I want us to do, each one of us, this will be our homework, let's look through this, let's highlight, let's see what, what animals, specifically, so we can come back and talk about these animals, okay? Because somebody got to do the work to define for this, what, as for harming somebody, because just like we said, birds are in the zoo, they don't bother anybody, so we're going to go and take people's birds? Just, you know, just, let's define what we feel and kind of share it with the attorney, if we could, so he can put the language together for us, if we can do that. Each councilman, and the exotic part, okay?
Can we also look at a grandfather clause perhaps as well? Or I guess just whatever changes that are, we're recommending or suggestions that we have, I guess we share with the attorney?
Yes. You heard that, John Michael? Look at any part that we might could grandfather in, and then they're going to share it with you, so you can put the language together for it.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any more comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item for your all's consideration, the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter two of the city code by amending section two dash one point two, election procedure for mayor and council members to provide for the nomination of candidates for mayor and council candidates by petition. Again, as a reminder, this ordinance would kind of reinstate the petition method that the city once had. Candidates for mayor and council would now must qualify, would be required to qualify by submitting a nominating petition. Petitions must be filed with the municipal election commission, no fewer than forty-five days before the election. Petitions must contain signatures of at least five percent of qualified electors of the candidate's district, or for the entire city, for any candidate running for mayor. And petitions are reviewed by the supervisor of registration, whom is certified, that certify candidates no fewer than thirty days before the election. I know there were some questions, I think by Councilman Hawkins, as to how many other cities do this method or have a petition method. I think there are seventeen out of the two hundred and seventy-two or seventy-three municipalities in the state that currently follow this method. Happy to answer any other questions that you all might have.
Are there any comments and questions before we read this ordinance?
Mr. Everett, you said there were seventeen out of how many?
Two hundred and seventy-two, I believe.
I don't know if y'all saw my email I sent out, but, you know, but only seventeen out of two hundred and seventy-two municipalities in South Carolina using this filing. That means more than ninety-three percent of municipalities do not. And I think there's a reason, I don't think it's fair, that someone can sign a petition and never even vote, somebody can sign two different petitions. It proves nothing, in my opinion, about whether a candidate is serious or supported. If someone is truly committed to serving Orangeburg, their votes on election day will reflect that, not how many signatures they can gather. My opinion, we have much larger issues within the city that deserve our attention. Going backwards on our old system that we moved away from only creates confusion and mistrust. I ask my fellow council members to please vote no on this. Let's keep our elections open, fair, and accessible for everyone who wants to serve their community.
Any more comments? I'm going to read the ordinance. An ordinance amending chapter two administration of the city code by amending section two dash one two. Election procedures for mayor and council members to provide for the nomination of the candidates for mayor, toria, and city candidates by petition. We would like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, on this second reading, I make a motion for us to approve the second reading. And based on what Councilman Jordan has just said, which I need to look more into his letter, that we need to approve the second reading. And before the third reading, you know, to have more time to look at it, I make a motion for us to approve the second reading for now.
A motion's been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kidd, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Four, two. As have, the motion is carried.
Three.
Four, three.
Who did you say?
It's four, three, four approved, and three opposed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item for your consideration is the canceling of the January twentieth, twenty-twenty-six city council meeting due to the municipal association's hometown legislative action day. This is a cancellation that you all typically do annually to participate in the municipal association's hometown day in Columbia. During that time, you get a chance to visit the state house and speak with the legislative, the state legislative delegation and other representatives. So, for your consideration.
We would like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion to-
Cancel the January twentieth, twenty-twenty-six city council meeting due to the municipal association's hometown legislative action day.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilman Greaves.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor? As have, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item for your consideration is resolution approving the city administrator to enter contract with Palmetto Corp. of Conway in the amount of five million, two-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-forty-seven dollars for runway seventeen and runway thirty-five pavement rehabilitation project at Orangeburg Municipal Airport. This is a project that would basically just repave those two runways. It would provide for a safer surface for our aircraft that are flying in and out of the airport. It will be paid for primarily with FAA grant, they will pay up to ninety-five percent of the cost. Two and a half percent of the cost would be paid by the state aeronautics commission, and then the remaining two and a half percent will be paid by the city, but we have capital project sales tax funds allocated to pay for that matching, those matching grant funds.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Everett. Would this rehabilitation project happen at the airport in any way of receiving planes?
Do you mean while it's occurring? I'm sure there will be some, the project is slated to start in March and be completed within seventy days, but I imagine there will be some, some adjustments that have to be made. I can't tell you the exact, is it going to close the entire?
That's correct. That runway will have to shut down for a small amount of that time for them to be able to actually get in there and do the resurfacing of the project. And so, they will try to keep it open as long as they can, as well as the other runway that we have out there will remain open as well.
No, okay. You say something, because you know, I go out there quite often. So, there's one runway wherein all the jets can come and land on. Okay, then you answered the question. It won't take them out of circulation, it won't take us down. Thank you.
Any more questions?
You said it was seventy days for the completion of the project?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. We'd like to entertain a motion to authorize our city administrator. If we can just entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion that we do allow the city administrator to carry on with the five-point-two-million-dollar upgrades to the Orangeburg Airport, understanding that this city comes out of pocket, but two and a half percent, you said?
Yes, sir.
Motion is made by Councilman Hawkins and second by Councilman Kidd, all in favor? Any opposed? As have, the motion is carried. Item number six.
I'm going to turn it over to your assistant city administrator.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I stand before you to present first reading of three separate ordinances to consider zoning map changes as recommended by the planning commission from the November twentieth planning commission meeting. Public hearing was held on each of the proposed changes prior to the planning commission's vote. The first item is item number six, which is on the agenda, and it is an ordinance to consider a zoning district map change from A-one single unit district to O-I office institutional for property belonging to the city of Orangeburg with the address of eighteen ninety-five Columbia Road, tax map number zero one seven four dash seventeen dash zero eight dash zero zero five point zero zero zero. As mentioned, this is property that belongs to the city of Orangeburg. It's a, it's a house that is located on the Columbia Road. And if you're facing the house, to the left of it, there is commercial property, and across the street, there's also commercial property. So the change was in consideration of trying to align with those commercial properties. We did send out letters to all of the residents in the area to notify them of the pending change, but there was no one present at the planning commission meeting to speak in support of or against the, the property change. So the planning commission did approve it.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms., Ms. Williams?
I do, yep. Eighteen ninety-five Columbia Road, that's owned by the city of Orangeburg, correct?
Correct.
And there is a current residence on that property?
No.
No.
Structure, nothing at all?
Well, there is a, there's a house, but it's been abandoned for many years.
Okay, or is that gonna be demolished as a part of this, or?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. And are, we're trying to change this in order to try to sell it, or what was the reason for the change?
From my understanding, it was to align with the commercial properties that were next to it, adjacent to it, and then also across the street. I know that the property is currently up for sale, but I think that the purpose was to align more so with the commercial properties.
So it'd be an easier sale, I guess?
Yeah.
If the time came?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, you know, they just put that new bank up there, right next door to it. And, uh, but even before now, George, John used to, was trying to sell that too, when he was here. He was trying to sell that property because before the, the Dennis, the gate, Dr. Gate put his place, so they, we helped him, that was, that was residential. And we changed, changed to commercial up there in that area.
You know how we acquired this property?
Well, I don't know, it was before our time. It was before our time, when I came here, they, they, we owned this, I don't know how we got it. Okay, are there any question about Columbia Road before I read the ordinance? If not, I'm gonna read the ordinance. An ordinance to approve a change to the zoning district map from A-one residential, single unit district to O-I office institutional residence district for the property belonging to the city of Orangeburg located at eighteen ninety-five Columbia Road, tax map number zero one seven four seventeen zero eight zero zero five zero zero zero, and provide for related matters. We would like to entertain a motion, please.
Mayor and Council, I motion the adoption of the zoning district map change from A-one residential, single unit district to zero dash one office institutional residential district for the property belonging to the city of Orangeburg located at eighteen ninety-five Columbia Road.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit?
Second.
Second by Councilman Grevees, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you. Item number seven.
Okay, um, item number seven is also for your consideration, which is an ordinance to consider a zoning district map change from A-two residential, multi-unit district to B-one general business district for property belonging to the Paragon Development Group. The property address is two thirty-seven Maxi Street, tax map number zero one seven three dash fifteen dash fourteen dash zero three four point zero zero zero. Again, the planning commission held a public hearing. There was one person who attended. She actually is a resident of the Maxi Street area. So she attended just to understand what was going on. She didn't really support it or was against it. She was just trying to understand what was taking place. There was a member from the Paragon Development Group that also attended the meeting so that he could address questions if they, if they came up. I think on your screen is a rendering of the property that is, that's up for discussion. And again, there was a public hearing held before the vote, and the planning commission decided to recommend the proposed changes. The Paragon Group is looking to use this property and the next one that we're gonna talk about, develop both properties for student housing.
Um, Ms., now, it's gonna be multiple student houses there, like an apartment?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, I'm not clear right now on the number of units, but yes, they're looking at multiple units for those locations.
Oh, I want to say to the council that, just kind of just for FYI, that South Carolina State and Claflin are in desperate need of housing, student housing. They had the numbers, it was so sad when they gave the number of students they had to turn away because they didn't have enough housing. And students have always lived along, you know, along there up and down that street so they could walk to class. And they lived on Oak Street, they lived all down, going all down Boulevard and all those places so they could get to class. And it was just sad to know that they had to turn all of those students, they turned a lot of students away. So it's a desperate need in, in Orangeburg for student housing. I just wanted to throw that out.
Do we know how many houses remain on Maxi Street that are occupied by residents?
I do not know that number, but I can get, I can find that out for you.
I do. I know. Okay, you come, I, I go there all the time. You come in on the first street, it's one, I'm saying one, and then you go up in, in Gina's Court. Ain't no, ain't nobody, ain't hardly nobody up in there. And then some of them houses falling down, then you got the Habitat, some of them empty. And you go down to the end of the street, some, they sporadically, it's not a lot of residents. It's, I, I, I mean, I can just see it right now in my mind. And then on the side by Old Mount Zion Baptist Church, there's down there, nobody living in that house. Not a soul live there. And it's, and in, and you got the, the old church that used to be Old Faith Tavern, ain't nobody using that church. Then you got that little alley right there. And then you got the, you got the little house next to it, they ain't doing nothing, ain't nobody over there. Then you get to, what's the name? I forgot the late name. But it's, it need, it, it need any kind of upgrading, we can get, we can give it, there's kind of development.
Ms. Williams, what's this yellow shade here on this?
So if, can you bring that one up?
What was said?
So that is the, the, the two parcels that, that we're talking about, which is number seven and eight on the agenda, are the two areas that's not shaded. Those are the, the two parcels that will be developed by the Paragon Group.
And, and what is the yellow highlighting?
That's just areas are in and around the property.
I think Ms. Grevees was talking. You was talking?
No.
Thank you, Mayor. That's Ms., that's Ms. Kit district.
Yes.
And, and there's no difference between Ms. Kit districts and Ms. Knott districts or Councilman Kalu district. All of us have the same situations. It's just not maybe as many. But anytime someone is willing to invest their money, they didn't come to the city and ask for anything, to invest their money for an upgrade in the community, because I know this, when one neighbor paints their house, the other neighbor does too. When they, one neighbor cuts their grass, the other neighbor cuts their grass too. So we know that this buildings are coming in there to make something nice, something better, and something not only help the students, it will help Orangeburg period. Because how do we know all the movie in there has to be students, may, I mean, mayor's students? It'll be, that's what they geared towards. But it'll be something that anyone can come and rent. So it is a blessing that someone's gonna come bless their own money and not ask us for a dime.
That's right. Any more comments? Kalu, you, any more comment?
No.
You gotta comment on your area. You gotta comment on your area.
Yeah.
You wanna say something?
No, it's, it's fine, because just what you're saying, whenever we can do more housing for Orangeburg, because housing is a problem. And anytime we can upgrade, it is better for the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, so we're glad to see someone going in there doing some work for the community. It will make a difference. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Knott, she was saying what's there? No, huh, Ms. Grevees? Okay. You have something to say, Mr. Hawkins?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna read the ordinance. An ordinance to approve change to the zoning district map number from A-two residential, multi-unit district to B-dash one general business district for the property belonging to the Paragon Development of the SCLLC located at two thirty-seven Maxi Street, tax map number zero one seven three fifteen dash fourteen zero three four zero zero zero, and provide for related matters. I would like to entertain a motion, please.
Mayor and Council, I'm motion for the approval of a change to the zoning district map from A-two residential, multi-unit district to B-one general business district for property belonging to Paragon Development of SCLLC located at two thirty-seven Maxi Street.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit?
Second.
Second by Councilman Grevees, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Now, that, that covers eight too?
Actually, I was gonna do that one separately.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So lastly, is item number eight, again, an ordinance to consider zoning a district map change from A-two residential, multi-unit district to B-one general business district for property also belonging to the Paragon Development Group. And the property address is two forty-five Maxi Street. So these properties are actually side by side. And Paragon is looking to develop that entire area with student housing. So again, someone from Paragon attended the planning commission meeting to talk about what their plans were, and you had one resident from the area that was just there to understand what was gonna be taking place. But in the end, the planning commission did recommend the changes to the area.
Good.
So with the, is the playground a part of their property?
No. No, it's not.
Okay. So the playground would stay in place?
Yes, to my, to my understanding, yes.
Yeah, they, it's, it's a good waste for the playground.
Yeah. It's a, it's a long, narrow strip of property, if you can look at the map and see it.
Okay, um, are there any discussion on this before I read the ordinance? If not, an ordinance to approve a change to the zoning district map from A-dash two residential, multi-unit district to B-dash one general business district for the properties belonging to Paragon Development of the SCLLC located at two forty-five Maxi Street, tax map number zero one seven three dash fifteen dash fourteen zero three three zero zero zero, and provide for the related matters. We need to entertain a motion, please.
I move that we approve the ordinance as read, as stated.
Yeah. Motion has been made by Councilman Grevees and second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. All right, now?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. So good to see you. We are, we have our executive session and our, our discussion is discussion of negotiation incident to propose contractual arrangements and propose sale or purchase of property and the receipt of legal advice, section thirty dash four dash seven, eight to Columbia Road property. And we will not be coming back to open session. And we're gonna say good night to everyone, and we're gonna ask all our council members to please be at the luncheon tomorrow and please be on time, because we wanna shake hands with all of our employees at eleven o'clock. Thank you so much, and God bless you. Make a motion, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Councilman Grevees.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it, the motion says good night, everyone.